All right. So.
Hey, Dan. I think in the last session you had did remind everybody that if you did want to say something off the record, let it be known ahead of time so the recording could stop.
That's right here on this next slide. Yep. So if you want to speak off the record, let me know before you speak off the record. All right. Public video recording. Thanks to Jim, our host. We're also aiming for near real time notes. You don't have to record, write things down that are already on the slides. That's mostly for Q and A. And we got shared notes. If I'm encouraging people to register their attendance, if you can get to the governance channel and click this, it'll do that here. I'm hoping that we're going to do more of that kind of polling. All right. I carry another proxy. I'm up to about 11 now. All right. So there's this thing in the bylaws. If 10% of the members say so, then we can have a special meeting. A lot of people are familiar with that. It also says you have to have one or more specific matters for a vote. And so the specific matter that I came up with is whereas Barry Sineman, Mark Puy and Kevin Goldstein served with distinction on the R chain co-op cord, let us thank them for their service. Just to recap history, April 23, there's Barry's resignation, 24th marks. April 26, I started this proposal to have to do the special meeting stuff. We got our over 100 votes, which is over 10% of the membership. Rough plan was to do two to three 90 minute webinar sessions. You're sort of in number two, separated by a few days for hallway discussion. And then April 27 was kind of before the first session, if you like. My office hours were well attended that day and you're welcome to the rough transcript and the video recording. Then April 27, there was a regular Wednesday member meeting. A bunch of people were there. There was a governance meeting on Thursday the second. There's a landscape spreadsheet that you're encouraged to have a look at, usual raw video and some chat stuff. You're not at May 4th, you're at May 11th.
There are minutes to that meeting as well, Dan.
There are minutes for the governance meeting?
Yeah, there are.
If you want to share them again, I missed them. So.
Yeah, sure.
That'd be nice. All right. So then May 11th, you are here and. May 14th, Greg Meredith has confirmed to participate. And if you want the coordinates in your time zone, these are on the R chain community calendar. So the 11th is here with the zoom link and all that kind of stuff. And then the 14th is there. All right. Okay, so. I did the sort of formal 10% stuff to drum up mandate for a special meeting, but there's other, you know, the first item of business is to thank these folks for their service. You might think the next item of business would be to think about electing replacements, but that takes at least 60 days. And I didn't want it late that long. So it's not clear that we're going to make any binding decisions in this meeting. I aim to facilitate a discussion where people are heard. And I think that clear proposals with backing of dozens of members, including offers to participate critically, should be enough to start useful things moving. For example, we could find, make a short list of board members that we recommend to the board. Who am I? I'm not going to go over that in detail today. And then this is just a reminder of keep, if you're speaking, watch the notes. If the scribe got it, we heard you already. No need to repeat yourself. The scribe didn't get it. Many meeting participants probably didn't either. Are you talking too fast? Are you rambling? And I'm not going to do this. The last two sessions, we have together done verses of the Co-op Blues roughly. The one here is from the members channel, blah, blah, blah. It became near impossible to responsibly put one's reputation on the line for this project. So that's kind of where we find ourselves. And I'm not going to spend time in this session for commiserating, but I acknowledge that that's where a lot of people are. And then I'm going to skip right ahead to the sort of help wanted and the issues stuff. And that's sort of some stuff. There's also a couple of those. That's sort of exact versions of the bylaws and the, you know, the status of the cooperative is the bylaws plus all the decisions the board has made since then, including decisions at the October 2018 annual meeting. We got 951 ID verified members as of April 24th. These are the staff. These are the officers, treasurer and secretary are vacant. So that's the slides. Anybody have questions on that stuff? I'm going to go back here and practice our. So we have nine registered attendees. If you want to say for the record that you were here. Anything you say might get written down and then it would be a matter of record that you were here, but this is sort of practicing our polling mechanism. So if I look at the reactions, all right. So there's the folks that are registered attendees. You can also give your proxy to me for if you're not going to make one of the sessions or just in general, if you'd rather I spoke for you. I'm going to try to not take an individual position. I'm mostly going to try to listen to what a lot of people say and consolidate it. Okay. Next. Here is our list of issues. I'm going to do something random and put Kenny Rowe on the spot to pick one of these.
Thanks, Dan. Let's pick one of the items of business. Those are always fun, huh?
Okay.
It's the governance structure review, IOB four, GP 001.
Right. So there was a little bit of discussion. I'm hoping that we'll put the sort of current version of the proposal in the first comment, but we haven't managed that one in this one, this case. There, I think, Nick, that's kind of.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember that one. Yes, that's right. That's the thing where we got to.
The other thing that's, that's critical to have in hand when looking at this, it says GP 001. One might wonder what that is. And where did it go?
Yeah, there's a link, there's a link in there somewhere. Where is it? Basically, that's the process by which members define a proposal to be considered by the board or any committee.
Well, hang on, let's get it in front of us, please.
Yep.
You can stick it in the governance channel, for example, and that will get it to me. I was pretty sure I had made a link in one of these issues, but evidently not this one. Do you have it handy, Nick?
Yeah, sorry, working on it. I'm trying to find the most recent one. Approved one.
Let me queue that up.
The last submitted one, rather.
Right. Let me queue that up and ask anybody to talk, pick another one.
About the, share the executive powers between the president and the executive committee.
All right. Sorry, I missed that. Who was speaking there? Learning the voices.
That's Kenny.
Oh. Still learning your voice? Do you have a cold or anything?
I have a terrible cold.
Oh, okay. All right. Now this one, the sort of current version of the proposal is here. And I'm going to attempt a dramatic reading. All right, to temporarily consolidate, amalgamate the functions of the AFC, that is the Audit and Finance Committee, and the Governance Committee into a reconstituted executive committee and to restrict the executive powers of the president and the board of directors. Functions of the AFC in governance will be performed by specific member roles and accountabilities in the new executive committee, including but not limited to additional key roles such as technical, engineering, technical strategy, communication, community observers and people slash HR, human resources. Role of the new executive committee is to implement the board's fiduciary, strategic and generative plans, policies and decisions consistent with the cooperative's vision, mission and guiding principles. The chief operating officer chairs the executive committee and reports to the board of directors attending board meetings with other executive committee members according to the agenda. The president may also serve at the executive committee representing the board of directors and has a vote but no overriding authority. The board of directors, normally chaired by the president, will cease to engage in day to day executive decisions and will and will guide the executive committee solely by defining the purpose, mission of the co-op, defining values by which the co-op will perform its daily duties, identifying the stakeholders relevant to the co-op, commissioning a strategy from the executive committee and approving it, ensuring implementation of the strategy and supervision of the performance of the executive committee using independent advice, stakeholder consultation and or audit as necessary. So I had a bunch of feedback on that, but.
Yeah, there's some more, there's a later version.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. So if you go, if you scroll down.
No.
There's the, there's the fuller one with, there's more stuff in there. I think you've got the one there, which is probably, you know, the basic stuff. So that's the sense of it. But in here, we added a few, a few things based on comments by Justin and John Bowden and, and yourself. And then you've commented further on this, this final draft and I responded to your.
Oh, right.
Your build. So.
So very much in progress here. Well, except that the gist of it is.
You've just got, you've just covered the gist of it. Yeah. That covers, that covers it. Your point, I think your point was well made there about ensures the strategy. The board being, having to ensure the strategy is achieved. I think probably assure would be maybe a better word or the idea is it doesn't, it doesn't do it. There's a separation, it sets a strategy and then it's the executive committee which actually enacts it and does it.
Okay, so Nick and I are diving into the details, but probably before we get there, a couple of things.
I got a question about that one.
Go ahead.
Well, so are we saying that the, the the board of directors would essentially tell, state to the executive committee, okay, you need to come up with a strategy. The executive committee is coming up with the strategy, which is to be executed. And once the board of directors reviews it and bless it, then the executive committee goes forward to execute it.
That's about it. Yeah. That's a sort of a normal, I think, executive board. No, sorry, board, board of directors relationship. We've got a mix of executives. So some of the, remember the, the board will have some of the executive on it anyway. And there'll be non-executive members on there as well, who are meant to have, if you like, a wider view of what, what the co-op is about and it's a wider perspective and maybe a, an independent perspective. So that it's a check on the on the actions of the executive.
Yeah, that sounds about right to me too, Nick. Thanks.
So the board is essentially long range, doesn't get, so it's, if it is strategic, you know, it doesn't get down in the month. Well, maybe it does do some monthly stuff. Obviously it's looking, it's looking at the numbers and he's getting a report from the CEO stroke COO on how things are going and if there's anything happening or this is a serious incident of some kind. But it isn't in the business of making. Yeah, Dan, the words day to day operational decisions are probably problematic. But there is a distinction there, I think, in that paragraph there, in those paragraphs about the types of role of distinct of the executive and of the board.
Right. Thanks, Dan.
So this proposal kind of emerged out of the four made discussion and I, we started the polling because it was supported by a number of members. So it's here in the governance channel. One can find it by, oops.
I think it's one of the pins, I think. So.
Okay. So it's all, it's pinned and there's a link right from the top of the issue. There's 26 who have expressed support plus my 10 proxies gives us about 36. Now, changing the wording of the thing out from underneath might seem like an odd thing and it would be if that was a formal vote, but this is a poll and an indication of support. And I'm, you know, watching to make sure that the specifics of the proposal don't go too far from what everybody has endorsed so far. Right. Other voices that have not spoken to this.
From my perspective, this is Kenny.
Yeah.
I would suggest that this group have very clear rules of how meetings are conducted. Because if the executive is allowed to attend them, then they tend to dominate the conversation and run off and filibuster and some of these other things. So if the, if the goal is to truly have some sort of autonomous body that is putting a check on control, it needs to happen within the meeting itself.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So the specifics that I read in the current proposal is that the COO chairs the executive committee. That's Rob, that's Robbie. Is that consistent with your advice? Kenny?
I, I wouldn't say roles and responsibilities are necessarily my concern. My concern is that one individual, Greg Meredith, not be allowed to talk on end and to, and dominate the agenda. Because that's essentially what he'll do if he's allowed to attend.
Okay. Well, I would, you know, anyway, if I were chairing, I expect Robbie is competent to do that. So anyway.
Well, I think that's part of the important aspect of the, the president has a vote, but he cannot override.
I think Kenny's point is to some extent a social thing about people talking a lot.
Right. But I, when, when we're, I'm also trying to think of this in terms of regardless of who the characters are, that the, the formation and the structure is correct. So that if this does become an ongoing reorganization, that regardless of who's in the body of any particular position, that the function gets the results that the cooperative is looking for.
Okay. Yep. Other voices?
Perhaps there could be something about every committee member is given an opportunity to respond to.
To me, this gets into telling teachers how to teach. I expect a competent chair.
Yeah, never mind.
Yeah. I think your point is sort of, you know, yes, that's, that's what part of good of chairing is, but.
Yeah. And I think that may fall into more into the principles that are set up by the board.
Oh, okay. That's a good point. The board could say that one of the principles is that all the voices should be heard and stuff. Yeah. Okay. So I wonder how much to deal with this in this meeting. I haven't read all that. I'm sure if I read it in detail, I'll have something to say. So I'm not going to read it in detail right now. Oh, maybe I will introduce the notion of the phone tree a little bit at this point. Because, okay, so I said, let's have a special meeting and 100 people said, yay, let's do. And then, you know, we came up with possibly the most, you know, relevant and important piece of business that, that we could do in such a meeting and a couple of people said, okay. So this is where the rubber meets the road, folks. A, you know, but I want dozens of members in support, you know, 26 is technically two dozen. And we've got a couple of offers to participate. So John, I keep forgetting your surname. And you're not here. Nick, remind me.
John Boden.
Thank you. John Boden from Govern and Nick have offered to participate. Now, until I get fired or resigned, I'm on the executive committee. Oops. Anyway, it seems to me we have a critical mass of offers to participate in the executive committee. But we could do with more member support. We, we don't have Robbie and Steve Ross Talbot here today, but we did last week. And Steve Ross Talbot is one of the 26 here. So the only way to affect this change in the near to medium term that I can see is if the, if the board actually makes this decision. And I expect that either Robbie or Steve Ross Talbot might bring this to the board, but they would do well if they had, you know, 57 signatories, you know, on the piece of paper walking into the meeting. So talk to your friends. Speaking of which, we took the 100 people who said, yay, let's have a meeting. And we, I started making a phone tree. So Gary Coulter took a few names. John Bowden took a zillion names and contacted these people. And there's a little recruitment script here that says, are you paying attention? Do you want to vote? Do you want to give somebody your proxy? So this is, when I did it, this was my single, you know, copy and paste into the chat thing. So actually I'm going to do a small amount of recruiting right now. Does anyone want to take roughly a dozen assignments to go and find these people and get them to direct, you know, either give a proxy or directly participate in this polling stuff?
Yep, sure. I'll, I'll take some names. This is Kenny.
All right. If I just do, I took one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. So that's just, oh, that was 10. All right. Well, that's roughly a dozen. Maybe I'll give you more if that works out. Anybody else want to play?
Dan, you can give me some. Do you have a script or anything that you want to be used?
Recruitment script. Let me paste this thing every possible place. Here's the phone tree. And then in the zoom chat and then in the governance channel. Oops. Why can't I paste? Oh, there's GP 001. That's handy. Let's see. Bill, is it clear to you what the recruitment script is now?
Yes, thank you.
Uh huh. All right. So I'm gonna give you. I'll find your exact Discord name shortly. Whoosh.
It's Bill 7586.
Sure I've got that in here. Oh, I don't. Thanks. Does one more person want to play the game?
Dan, this is Steve Henley. You can go ahead and put me down for some names.
Rock on. You can spell your name.
H E N L E Y. There you go.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. All right. And it's most useful if you can get them engaged before Tuesday, May 14th. Does that make sense?
Right.
All right. Let me go back to. Now that we have this dude add. Did I open it? Now this. Besides Nick, somebody who's familiar with this, just say, I'm familiar. Okay. So Nick, none of the discussions should assume any familiarity with this. Does that make sense?
I suppose so.
So I will replay a little bit of history, which is that the co-op had an item of business for on participation of membership and governance. And then Kenny carried the ball with weekly updates on where that was going. And then the governance committee took it up and it turned into this. And so this is where we are on item of business four. Oh, that was already right there. So I'm going to switch over and see if. All right. I'm going to try to do. Oh, right. Somebody besides Nick, read this for me. I'll do it. There's no volunteers. Okay. Is it important to read the first paragraph, Nick?
Probably. I think that's where the thread started from. Yes. A little bit of context, but the three points below are the specific things that you were looking for, Dan, I think, when you.
Right. So at the moment, the governance committee and the membership are largely, largely ignored by the board. The governance committee is one of the committees, like the dormant executive, subservient to the president and the main board. Two members. Oh, I would take issue with the idea that the board is subservient to the president, but anyway. Two members, two member observers attend the board meetings, the intention for the chair of the government committee to be a board member and have a vote. Then the CEO and the chair of the government committee, governance committee resigned with no functioning influence on president or board decisions, proposals for reform from the governance committee. CGP 001 were opposed by the president in correspondence outside of the board meeting and have not been tabled for a formal vote by the board. By the way, tabled is one of those words that has the opposite meaning on, in the UK and the US. In the US, tabled means taken off the table. In the UK, it means put on the table.
Hey, that's really good. Thank you for that. I was under the table. Do you have that one as well?
Yes. Okay. With that context, proposed, the board should approve GP 001. The governance committee should continue to review the design of governance and propose improvements with plans under GP 001 to ensure the proposed changes have transparency and support. A governance committee member should attend. A governance committee member should attend board meetings and have voting rights, and a member of the executive committee should serve on the governance committee. Now, okay, so is that clear to anyone? I'm gonna pick on somebody. Jonathan Kochmer, did that make sense? Okay, drawer?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. It seemed like a bad idea to anybody.
This is Rao. When we say, item one, the board should approve GP001. I mean, we can't force the board to do anything. They're going to act in their own wisdom, right?
Correct, I will replay my ground rules here. Clear proposals with backing from dozens of members, including offers to participate, should be enough to start useful things moving. That is, if 80 members said this should happen, and three members said, I'm willing to make it happen, and the board said no, then we can all just conclude that the board is not acting in the interest of the membership and go our merry way and you know, not be involved in our chain very much. That's what I think is likely to happen. Does that make sense, Rao?
It does, but I mean, if that is how we're going to, is that going to be made a part of the decision criteria or the parameters under which the board operates, if that's what we're going to do in the long term? Because, I mean, this has to be yeah, I mean, I guess there needs to be some guidance of how the board makes decisions. That's kind of where this is going, right? It's not specific to a particular issue. But should there be something that says, what you just read, should that be part of kind of a mandate for the board?
So once we affect some changes, GP001 has quite a bit of detail about that sort of thing.
Okay.
But to get GP001 in place requires a board decision, and there's nothing, and if we were going to hold an actual official member meeting, I believe the quorum is 50%. So we'd have to get 500 members to endorse this proposal in order to compel the board to do it. So that's not among my goals.
We were very, very close to getting it passed, but then I think when Barry and when Mark resigned, they were supporting it. I think at that point, I'm not quite sure what happened after that, but I think the board lost interest in taking it forward. I think they were concerned with more urgent business at that time.
So I can kind of speak about what happened. There was a board meeting, and that was on the agenda. And then I think it was Steve who said that he didn't read the proposal. So the decision was delayed because of that. They needed time to review. I don't know if Greg said as well the same thing. But then on the next meeting, it wasn't on the agenda. And that meeting was kind of, I believe it was Greg maybe that said that there would not be decisions in this meeting. They were discussing other information for other stuff, so. And since then, the board didn't discuss it again at all.
A commitment was made by the board, I think, wasn't there, Dan, to raise it at the next meeting for approval? And Steve certainly said, having read it to me, that he would approve it. And I suggested that before that next meeting, by correspondence, board members would approve it. And I've got responses from, at that time, the majority of board members. Unfortunately, those board members subsequently resigned.
Yeah, I'd have to check my notes to see if anybody's got outstanding offers, but the board does have an obligation to fulfill IOB4. Unfortunately, IOB4 doesn't state a timeframe. So do we, what do we have in the way of offers to participate in the governance committee? Is that something we want to sort of not make top front burner?
Well, I think we do get attendance at governance committee when it whenever, when meetings are scheduled and minuted. I think there has been some churn in the five members now we could review. I don't think we probably do have a functioning quorum, just but I'm not sure we've got that anymore. I think Draw and Dan, Dan Salkov, were the other two.
My question is
Kenny, unfortunately, Kenny, have you actually resigned, Kenny, from the governance committee formally or not? I think you did, didn't you?
Yeah, the governance.
Yeah, yeah.
So Nick, my question is, you wrote in issue two to amalgamate the governance committee into the executive committee.
Yes, so I think that's a good idea. Whether you need, then you have some offline discussion. I think, given where we are with the level of membership we have, I think condensing governance committee down into a governance role with, you know, sort of guaranteed representation at the executive level would be a pretty good compromise. And then that person fulfilling that role could reach out ad hoc, you know, to the membership in the governance channel for Bill's advice and guidance and maybe call in meetings ad hoc when required on a particular topic rather than have a standing process there. But that would be up to that person. But I think the basic charter of the governance committee would, could be adapted pretty easily for that governance member role of the executive committee, if that makes sense. Does that make sense?
Okay, I kind of need a yes or no answer. Do I need to recruit people to serve on the committee? Or do we have enough? Or can we wait till, you know, months from now to recruit people?
I think you can wait, because I think you need to focus on the executive committee.
There, that's what, yes, thank you. That was the information I was after. All right. I guess I could, oh, not that one. We might as well poll for support on this thing, now that it's clear to at least one person, and I think it has a critical mass of support.
I would just say I would my own feeling is that the function of governance and executive should be separate. The multi-brand structure that Vegas has proposed for is that we have a separation of powers.
Jim, I'd agree with that. But in the current situation that we're in, we probably don't have enough enthusiasm or energy to staff up those separate committees as such. So as a temporary suggestion, I think Justin suggested that if we had those roles on the executive committee with safeguards to ensure that they acted in terms of their independent charter and remit, that would sort of be okay. But, you know, you're right, there is a risk there that they could become, I suppose, captured by the spirit of them of the meeting and forget their home role and their independence. But that, again, could follow, I think, later. If we get, if confidence rebuilds, then people might be willing to rejoin, in which case we go back to the position where it would say the chair of the government committee or one of the member observers, you know, sits on the executive committee to represent what the independent governance committee says on the way things are done around here.
I guess it's, you know, I consider it a matter of, you know, if we have a reasonable candidate willing to chair the governance committee. That and we had willing participants, that it wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna take up item 11 here, issue 11. Okay, so this is a proposal for timely board agendas and records. The idea is that to invite input from the membership, part of that should be publishing an agenda 48 hours in advance of board meetings. And getting us records within two weeks of the board meetings. And if the records don't come out within two weeks, the meeting is retroactively canceled, nullifying any decisions taken. And if an item doesn't appear on an agenda 48 hours in advance, sometimes that's okay. But if it doesn't appear on the 48 hours in advance, it's subject to appeal. It has to be published within 48 hours afterwards, and it's subject to appeal by any of the committees. People will have a week to try to talk board members out of their positions, and it and it needs two-thirds board majority at the end of the one-week period, or else the decision's vacated. So right, I have spent like a year and a half trying to get board minutes. So I would like to have rules that have teeth. Yeah, and I think GP001 is in a similar vein, but I'm happy to leave it as a separate issue.
Yeah, it is very much so, Dan. I think they're complementary, because I think the proposals you talked about in advance, that's exactly what GP01 was about. Whether it's a member bringing something to the board, or the board themselves proposing something, tabling something, that whatever is being proposed should have the form of a proposal, which is reasonably comprehensible and has had some thinking in advance done on it, and perhaps even, and shows a measure of support as well, at least as necessary. And that's, so we shouldn't be getting stuff being discussed on the fly in these important bodies. It should be, the thinking should be done in advance, and then it shouldn't be a big point of on-the-fly discussion.
Yeah, so that should definitely be the norm. I've sort of made accommodation for, you know, if somebody has an idea right in the middle of a board meeting, that's really gonna be excellent. And the board approves it, and everybody else agrees that it's excellent, then, okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
So this is also polling. I'm gonna have a few too many Discord windows. Oh, it has eight endorsements. That's well below dozens, but it's more than last time I checked, so that's cool. I don't think that needs more meeting time. Nope. Oh, okay, I thought that number just went up in front of me, but it didn't. Okay, so now I'm gonna step back just a little bit. Okay, so this is sort of the cover page. By the way, the recruitment scripts in this phone tree doodad is very, very similar to the top bullets here. That's on purpose. Okay, so the next session is May 14th with Greg. And is there anything that we should do before then that we have not done yet?
I was wondering what's gonna happen with the trust deal, because last meeting, we told Ravi and Steve that it was against IOB5. And also, we found that, so Ravi confirmed that the term that Greg claimed that deal had was not true for him to be a president or something like that, so. Are they supposed to get back to us with?
Yeah, I think Greg said, without, I know this is in the confidential call, but Greg said that he would get back. He undertook to come back with the wording of the conditions on that deal. I have not seen anything. Has anybody else seen anything?
Well, we had the COO read it from his copy of the notes, so I think that's as good as it gets as far as.
That was the key man clause.
Yes. Ravi double-checked the terms, and there is no, there's no such thing. That's a matter of record.
Oh, sorry, right, okay, fine, yeah, that's right, yeah, okay. So we have, so we have on record then that this that the president says there is a key man clause, and he was going to find it. And the COO, Ravi, says there isn't a key man clause. That's the position, right?
Right. To Draw's point, I did not get anybody to take an action item to do anything about it.
Yes, I'm not sure, can we, like, can we do something if it was against IOB5? Can we stop, like? Because the deal, I think there's a few tranches. Can we kind of do something about it, or what? As the membership? Because what I'm afraid is that, what's next? He will use the 400 million? And we cannot stop him, right? Because
Yes, as far as I can see, I think the special meeting process is really the only recourse. So if this might have to be, if they do something that is against one of the approved items of business, which were approved by the membership, that's like holding them in contempt or something like that. They've done something. And then I guess our only course of action would be either some disciplinary action at a special meeting. That's my guess. That's what I would propose, disciplinary action at a special meeting.
I think what we're proposing is a restructuring of the Co-op to prevent this problem.
Right, but I think Draw has a question about whether any of that is gonna have effect on the thrust deal. So it's possible that, for example, that the new executive committee would be seated within, I don't know, 45 days or something, and could have some impact on that deal.
And most importantly, they should know that. Like, don't tell Greg about it. If we notify Thresh that, they'll back off. They're business people, right? They're not gonna, they don't want to get into something that could get unwound, or get
Have we made a good decision that the deal shouldn't go through? No. I think we need the money. I think it speaks great for our chain that just has trust in our chain enough to partner with them and make them part of their portfolio.
Yeah, but that would probably be a different thing, though. That would be a special meeting to suspend IOB5.
Also, to James' point, we don't have all the information. I mean, some of us do, from the AFC and the board and others, but most of the members don't have the whole picture. About whose trust, about are there potential deals that could have been made? Et cetera. The problem is that this was most likely the only deal that would have kept the president in his position. And there were also other deals like in the past six months. That kind of could have, would have been much better deals than the trust deal. That I was aware of. I don't know if there were more. But they had like a clause that the management needs to be fixed. So I feel like the whole Co-op structure is kind of being used to keep the current management as is.
Yeah, and, you know, that goes back to my point that what we're doing is we're proposing to improve that structure. And, you know, they either, you know, we offer a path forward. We have people engaged in the processes.
So this is Row. So as far as the information gap to the members that Draw was pointing out. It's one thing to have access to the meeting minutes or board resolutions, whatever. But I think the background data, like the actual contract or the agreement with whatever third parties, even some reasons of that. Is it possible to make them available to the membership at large to say, okay, this is, you know, keep the details, I guess, that members don't necessarily need to know. I mean, that's a slippery slope a little bit, but but at least having a redacted version is better than not having anything at all as to what's really being agreed to and what's available for the board to look at, right?
Taking the chair hat off, just speaking for myself, I think it's appropriate to have all the details shared with the audience, Audit and Finance Committee, and for the membership to be represented there and either talk with people on the Audit and Finance Committee or because, you know, releasing the details of the contracts to the whole membership has led to some things that I'm not comfortable with, so.
Right, but then the Audit Financial Committee should do some version of summarization of here is what is, you know, here are the six here's what is good and bad about each of them and that's sort of the thing.
By the way, have you seen Mark Poo's offer to do exactly that? He has prepared some really excellent documentation and, and he's sharing it with individual members on, on request.
Why, why is it not available to the membership at large?
Well, I'm content that it's not because I have seen members do things that I'm not happy with about. They, for example, you know, go, yes, I think you get my point.
No, but I'm, I'm saying, so you're saying even the summary from the Audit Financial Committee should not be available to membership at large? Is that what you're saying? I'm, I'm saying there should be some level of summary that is available to membership at large.
Okay, so maybe the AFC could have done more, well, could do, you know, this is not only the past. Do, do a better summary. That's, that's true, but Mark reached his limit, so maybe he's available to be engaged again. I don't know, but it could be that somebody else needs to help wanted things lies here.
Right, right. Exactly. I think there needs to be more help offered because I mean, there's only so much we can ask any of the volunteer company members to do, but I'm saying to the extent that this is really where the whole unwanted, potentially unwanted, there's potentially unwanted conflicts. All of that arise from, I think we just need to have a process whereby more people vet it and then say, okay, this is how much we can reveal without any problems. And then go ahead and do that. And I mean, that part I'm willing to help with. Whatever the modality of that help is to, to say, let's create more public awareness of.
Right, so if, if there's going to be this interface between the membership and the committee, part of it is the committee summarizing. Yeah, that's a good point. Nick, you were gonna say?
Just that there should be no confidentiality, confidentiality or secrecy in the process of doing this, surely. And the template and Mark's suggestions about the way this should be done. Absolutely, the content of individual deals, you know, filled in and the assessments of that process should be, you know, kept close and only you know, a redacted form available to the wider membership. But yeah, you know, the that, that's an independence of the president making all of those decisions and then saying I made the decision and I consulted with, I discussed this with the board and I didn't have to.
Yeah, I think we've covered that.
That's, that's, that's what we need to get away from. We need.
That's the, we've sung the, the arcane blues enough times. Draw, I don't know whether we've addressed your question.
Yeah, probably not, but I, I, I think like, I guess we need, we kind of confirm that we need separation of power in the organization. Maybe the AFC could be another filter for any deals. I mean, maybe the AFC can have a part with the new executive committee.
Yeah, I might have muddied the waters by mentioning AFC there. It's really, the most clear proposal is the executive committee would do this.
Right. Okay, sure.
I'm wondering if there's a public relations or member relations function set up here that could oversee that this process is done or executed.
Yeah, well, there's a couple of things in that role. One is when things go bad, there's been talk of ombudsman. And the other thing is I'm putting my hat in for organizational communication, group memory and welcome rituals, so. That is now on my record. Okay, we are 60 minutes into a 90 minute session. Is there other stuff that should happen before the session Tuesday, May 14th? Let's see. Let me look at this list. Vacant board seat nominations. Yeah. I know more than I'm at liberty to say right now, but it would be good news. Does anybody have, anybody, you know, you're considering serving on the board or you really think that Fred or Bob or Sue should be on the board? Not everybody at once, no. So I guess.
I, I don't know if I recorded it there, probably not, but I put forward. Nick and Steve.
Nick Main, you're saying, and who else?
And I'm having Rich.
Oh.
Sorry about that.
It happens. Rich Jensen, I guess.
Yeah. And certainly, you know, if Bill or Draw or was interested, I would support them.
Okay, I've probably not done this, organized this discussion very well. It's kind of awkward to ask people to put this kind of thing, say this kind of thing. It also comes back to it's really difficult to put one's reputation on the line in this project.
Sorry. Deanna has offered her, expressed her interest, so I'll, I'll just share that.
Did she offer that for, in the public record?
That's a good question. She's not here offering it, so we've discussed.
That's why I didn't speak, you snort.
All right. I'll go back and be silent again. Thank you. Cheers.
I did hear her say conditionally that she would consider it, and I certainly would support that.
I, I would certainly support that as well.
I, I think it's difficult, though, for any of these nominations, to be clear. If the target of what you're nominating yourself or being nominated for isn't clear yet, there's sort of a dependency on that, isn't it? What is it? What is the role that we're talking? Is it an executive committee role? Is it a board role? And in what capacity on those bodies?
Yeah, Nick, I was just, I was just thinking the exact same thing. Because if we're trying to get away from having a board that is taking care of day-to-day execution responsibilities and such. You know, I mean, that would certainly exclude me from taking such a seat. Because I have a responsibility to, to take care of, you know, full-time, day-to-day operations and such. And I think the, the same thing would, you know, needs to be clear to anybody else who's being considered.
I think it could be dependent on the restructuring. We're just making recommendations. The terms, you know, are something else. And whether someone, you know, and I don't think anybody has to decide if they would accept a position.
I think you should also consider for the board, thinking about that, those non-executive roles on there and whether that we should invite maybe external, throw the invite out wider and think about asking people with wider, stronger industry reputation, perhaps, joining, joining the board to send a signal externally that things are changing in the co-op.
That's a good point, Nick.
I don't know who that would be.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think rather than just throwing names, we should probably think about what are the goals to be accomplished by the board over the next three years? And the, the qualifications of the kind of people that we might want. And then the roles that we're looking for, if there is any definition of that. I mean, those three things, I think if we define, then what names would be appropriate, whether people are self-nominating or somebody is nominating somebody else. Would be a little, a lot more effective if those three things are defined, the goals, roles and qualifications, I think.
Yeah, agreed.
You know, one of our members, Doug Rushford, to entertain the board, which he has expressed an interest in previously. Couldn't hurt.
Yeah, I'm having trouble just chairing this discussion because everybody's talking about the functions that the people would serve and I have a more short-term. I want to give names to the people on the board, but I gather that the most people feel differently, so. I will not attempt to drum up more support for that position.
No, but I mean, Dan, if, this is Row. If that is the case, if we need to give names, at least can we get, if not three years, can we get three months, six months, one, one year? What it is that we're trying to accomplish or what we want the board to do so that at least we can say, okay, these are the right people to potentially do that. I mean, there, there is the Jim White score of you, which is all somewhat valid to say you get a good person there, they'll figure it out.
Yeah, to my, we've discussed all that to my satisfaction under issue three and issue two.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the idea is, what I'm saying is that all you can do is have candidates that have support. We don't have to decide what role they're going to take or if we're going to vote, you know, if we're going to support them as we're going to give a thumbs up under their nomination. So we're just giving member sentiment. It's not deciding anything about who's going to be on the board. That would be I don't, without the reorganization that we're proposing, I expect that most of the people would not accept the position like Doug Rushford, but I think we should without potential people, the responsibilities of the board under the new organization are limited. And you need a more diversified board to execute them.
It's possible that the current four-member board won't adopt any of these proposals, but a different board would.
Well, and I think most of the candidates or board members won't. Probably won't, wouldn't join, except under revision of the structure.
Okay, then we would have a catch 22, yeah.
I think if you do get the opportunity to signal that, you know, a change in the structure and a more open approach, you could actually invite candidates for those positions to come in with their proposals and their vision for where they wanted to take things. And then you might have, you know, a more interesting discussion and perhaps opened up to the membership as well. Where in the process of applying for the role and, and, you know, preparing the, the application, they build some support from the membership.
What if I put you on the spot and ask you to do that in the Governance Committee, Nick?
What to do, to run that process?
Yeah.
I think what we, I, I thought that was the, we had another, we've already got a committee for that, haven't we? Which is the nominating committee.
Point, but well made. And Deanna chairs that?
I don't know, sorry.
I, I think Philip is in the conversation. Philip, are you still on the nominating committee or you're not? Philip's trudge, I think.
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, I am. And Deanna is the chair for it, yes.
Did what Nick was saying make sense about how potential board members might develop their sort of position statements and then drum up support based on them?
Yes. But previously, the, the nomination committee just acted upon a request of the board. So for vacant seats, it's not the process in the bylaws that the nomination committee should bring up a list of, of candidates, but rather that vacant seats are filled by the board themselves.
Yes, we all understand that the board has to actually ratify the decisions, but I don't think that the nominating committee is required to do nothing in the meantime.
At least as I understand the bylaws, it is at least not required for the board to go through the nomination committee. That doesn't necessarily mean that the nomination committee couldn't recommend members to be, to be, become board members for the vacant seats.
Right, exactly. We all understand the board is sovereign. They don't have to do anything the rest of us say. But we could do some useful things, right?
Well, I mean, I think Philip's right, though, that, you know, the board in historically, until, unless the annual meeting comes up, you know, the, the nominating committee isn't actually invoked and their process isn't invoked there. If we did something in advance, yes, that would be a proposal.
Wait, are you certain that the nominating committee is prohibited from doing anything at this point in the process?
It's not prohibited. It's not prohibited.
Right.
It's just.
Certainly, couldn't we build that ability into the executive committee by putting the nominating committee chair like Deanna on the executive committee as part of our, our new proposal?
That works for me.
Yeah, good one.
I would just like somebody to take the ball out of this meeting to really, you know, drive this process of, of coming up with potential members and their potential platforms or whatever.
As it exists today, what is the, I'm late to the meeting, I'm sorry. What is the process for the, the immediate process for either appointing or stalling on board member nominations and, and election?
My understanding, I can look more of it up here, but my understanding is the board can just, at this point, there is a vacant seat, so the board can decide, Bob's in. Does that make sense?
Or not.
Right.
Right, I mean, and I think in the, in the past, actually, how it had operated, the nominating committee versus the board, is that the board would bring somebody to the nominating committee and say, you know, vet this candidate out or like, you know, figure it out or whatever. And sometimes the nominating committee would seek proposals from the membership to say, hey, you know, we need nominations for, for this. I think the latter part should be more active so that we actually get of being, our candidates being pushed up to the board to look at and, and choose from as opposed to the other way around.
Yes, please. So my interest in doing this in the governance committee is that the governance committee currently has a heartbeat. It meets every Thursday, whereas the executive committee doesn't. I want somebody to actually say, when's the next meeting, when we're going to talk about this?
Yeah, well, right now, we don't have a chair for the governance committee independently.
Right.
Unless somebody is willing to take that role.
And yet, people go there and do work, which is all I need.
We're, we're there for a special purpose. There's a series of special purpose meetings going on to support this process.
Rich, would you?
We can discuss hijacking it and, and serve another set of special purpose meetings, I suppose.
Rich, would you be willing to guide the governance committee? Do we lose Rich?
No, he's here.
I'm here, I have to find my unmute button. I'm able to, I'm able to commit only through May at this time. I can, obviously, Nick is doing good work there. I will, if I can work with Nick and the other people that have been gathering on Thursdays, you know, I'm, I'm happy to collaborate.
Rich, would you allow me to elaborate on your only ability to commit through May?
Well, no one knows what the future will bring, but you're, you're, you're welcome to elaborate as you wish.
Okay, would you pause the record, please?